Okay, I'll go ahead and call this work session to order. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. We've got quite a bit to cover, so we'll ease on into it here. Anyone got any comments or changes on the agenda? Any commenters? Nope. Only thing, I don't think I have to change it, but we do have an appointment for the permit board, the new special permit board. We'd like one person, so that was not in there. Don, you, okay, you got, you got that covered, okay.
4D.
Yeah, 4D, yeah. All right. Everyone had time to look at our previous minutes, our previous minute, meeting. I know y'all had them for a while. Any comments or changes from your last meeting? Okay.
Nope.
And on the consent agenda. Turnover to number three, that's our personnel status report. Been a change or two in the jail, and I think Alex possibly has hired another person in there. They had one thing to leave. No drastic changes. We do have some help that we've got from the regional commission that's actually grant through a grant. It's really been helping us, and we've, we'll talk a little bit about it later on, but it's been helping down in the health department also, and it's really, it's really helped us a lot, but it's cost-free to us anyway. It's just a 16-week program. Any questions about our personnel status? Okay. All right. Move down to board appointments, presentations, and proclamations. The first one on 4A is presentation by the Cherokee Regional Library System, Ms. Lisa Eubanks. We owe you. Go on it, Lisa.
Oh, all right. You have something to do.
Thank you for letting us come tonight, and as you guys have been seeing in the newspaper, we've, our library system has been named the 2020 Georgia Public Library of the Year, and so I just wanted to come tonight and introduce the staff, make sure you know all these people behind me. I know you do if you use the library, and they're, they're what makes that library what they are. Marshana is actually holding down the fort. We're open till 7 o'clock tonight, but if you don't mind, I'll let these ladies come up and introduce their names and what they do at the library, and then I'll say a couple more things.
Okay.
Hi, I'm April Tinker. I've been a library assistant for 26 years.
26.
I'm Georgia Anne Jones, and I've been a library assistant at Dade County Library for two and a half years. I love it.
My name is Kristy Ballard. I'm the youth education coordinator at the library, and I've been there for about a year.
Okay, good.
Rebecca Coleman, I don't think she made it tonight, but she's another library assistant. But what I wanted to say is that we couldn't do what we do without the support, the unwavering support that we get from the county. You take care of our building and our facility. You make sure we have an appropriation every year that gives us everything that we need, and we thank you for that, and you've allowed us to do what we did in 2020 to be named the Georgia Public Library of the Year. The, it was a hard year, and if we were going to get the award, 2020 just feels awful special to get it in because it was so difficult, but we did put in a lot of protocols in place, and we're going to continue to do that because we do know how essential library services are to this community. So, thank you. Thank you for your support for our library system.
Thank you all. Thank you. Let's move down to 4B. This is an appointment of a member to the de-facts board of unexpired term. Over there to 4B. We had a resignation, as you can read there, from a board member. He had actually sent the letter to Kathy Johnson, and the, kind of unexpected, but we did have a person here that stepped up. It was Joe, can you pronounce that, his last name? I know Joe, but I've never ever been able to pronounce this. D.
Diestago.
Yeah, okay. But he was a really good board member. He really done a good job there, but he decided that he didn't have time to do that, and all. But anyway, we did have a resignation letter from him. And Kathy Reagan, which she was our de-facts, in charge of our de-facts for many years here, and she had retired, and she actually had stepped up the plate to replace him on the board. So she's, it's a real good, she's, you know, she knows, she can hit the ground running. She knows what she's, you know, what she's doing, and so, any questions?
Do have one correction on that. It said unexpired. There's actually two for her, Resolution 08-21. Says oh four, April 5th, 2021 to 3/31, so that's today, February 5th.
Yep.
2021, yeah.
Okay.
And then the following behind that is R09, and that's the, his term was going to expire on the 31st of March, so we just, I did a separate one.
Doing it.
Picked that new one up.
Okay.
Get that out of the way.
All right. So right now, we need, is everyone fine with the appointment with her?
I am.
Okay, everybody good? Okay, and then we'll move down to the, which would be E, and this is, I'm sorry, this is D, appointment of a member to the special, no, I'm wrong. Good to see, appointment of member to the Department of Family Insurance Services Board, okay? And this is actually the full term, which will be her. So we're actually doing two things tonight. It worked out better that way. So, any questions or comments? I mean, if everybody's fine with the pointer for the unexpired term, I'm sure we're probably fine with the pointer for the full term, and put that on the consent agenda. Okay? Let's move down to 4D. This is the appointment of a member to the special use permit board, R-10-21, and did have, I talked to a few people, and Robbie Ryan had showed interest, and he agreed to do that today. If everybody's fine with that, I told him, I said, he's kind of worried about it, and I said, well, you know, you can try it, and there's not going to be any hard feelings if he sees it's going to take more time than he needs, but I don't foresee it taking a lot of time. You know, it's just according to how much interest do we have coming in that we, you know, so, any questions? Y'all know Robbie, I mean, you know.
I'm good with it.
Okay, all right. Put down on the consent agenda. All right.
That does complete that board, right?
That's five, five members, yeah. Move down to 4E. This is the appointment of a member to the Industrial Development Authority, unexpired term, and I'm not having a look on that. I mean, if y'all, you know, because it can be from anywhere.
Okay.
Any part of the, yeah.
Start looking.
Yeah, so, it's kind of hard, you know, because it does, it does take some time, you know, they do meet pretty often, so it's not like, you know, so that's something we need to, need to be looking for. Okay. All right, move down to severe weather weather this week. This is R4, I mean 4F, and this is something we do, we've been doing this for years, you know, and anybody got any questions with that? Any comments? Okay, if not, we'll put it on the consent agenda. Move down to G, this is American Heart Month. So there again, we've been doing this for many, many years, you know, and so this would be questions on that. Okay, we'll put it on the consent agenda. This is Georgia Arbor Day, February the 19th. That's there again, I say go way back on that, on Arbor Day. So, any questions, any comments on that? Okay, put that on the consent agenda. Then we get down to 4I. This is Optimus Day, Trenton Dade Optimus Club, February the 4th. You got any comments on that, Don? I know you attend regularly, and Robert too.
I used to attend regularly, but anyway.
Well, I know you have, no, I understand, yes.
One of our, we have several past presidents in the room, but Jane is one, and.
Jane actually, she actually does attend regularly. Well, right now, we're not meeting because of COVID, but.
Yeah.
It's just a great day. It's an opportunity to just get the word out about what Optimus do, and it's celebrated actually today, the first Thursday of February every year.
Okay. Let's put that on the consent agenda. Move down to number five. This is approval of our SPOLOX cap and capital equipment. This is our copies for administrative building, tax commissioner office, sheriff's office, jail. Don, you want to kind of, I know you've been working on this, and.
Yeah, so, we have these all tend to come up around the same time, unfortunately.
I don't know who's that is.
I was muted a minute ago when it was doing that, but anyway, 60, it's a 60-month lease, and the purchases we made the last time, which was a couple of years ago, on different areas of the county, I think it was primarily the probate court, one over at the, maybe at the jail, I'm not sure, one at the public transportation. We actually use SPOLOX to purchase those because it saves a little bit of money, plus it saves on the general fund, and since that is a capital purchase, it does qualify. If we do the lease agreements, as stated, that is $66,981 that would come out of the general fund over 60 months. If we choose to use SPOLOX, it's $47,921. It's a savings of $19,060.53, almost $20,000. So I would recommend that we just purchase them. They're still, they will still be under a maintenance contract. If anything goes wrong, they will replace, up to replacement of the machine, which we've never had to do that. It's usually simple stuff, but it could be another board. That happened to us last year. It's almost, it's interesting, ours has not had any problems, but in the last month and a half, it's getting jammed more. It's all kinds of little issues coming up, and you know, our motherboard on that one went out last year, and we were down almost a wheat, and that's very difficult.
Yeah.
In today's world, because that's our fax machine and everything, so.
How long is the maintenance agreement?
Maintenance is 60 months too, but it's separate, yeah.
And you said that the purchase, on the table?
Purchase is $47,921.07. Now, to do this lease is $66,981.60. So that's a $19,060.53.
And what you're recommending though is actually, it'll be paid for out of SPOLOX.
Yes, I did.
Exactly, yeah. Robert, go around the table here, what do you think?
Well, obviously, if we need printers, it only makes sense to spend $19,000 lease, that's a no-brainer.
Yep.
I wish there was a way we didn't have to get them all at one time, but obviously, that's, when you do, they're going to start running out at one time. Not much you can do about that, so, I'm good with it.
Phil.
So that's on, that's on this year's SPOLOX?
Yeah, well, it's SPOLOX overall.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, yeah, current SPOLOX, current SPOLOX.
Oh, yeah, they hadn't started the other one.
And this will be the first time we've used out of the current SPOLOX for these, purchase of these particular printers. I mean, copiers, I'm sorry. I say copier, there are MFPs, whatever, multi, whatever that means. Yeah.
Okay, Lamar.
And the maintenance agreement that you say is, it's extra besides the 4?
Yes, it always is, always has been.
So what kind of price has that got on it?
It's a click rate based, there's a base rate, and then if you go over, it's included in this packet right here, I mean, it's.
I just didn't see that, I didn't see that.
Only ounce of a thousand in the click rate.
Yeah, it gets into the six point, .0097 cents per copy and point, for black and white, and 0.067 for print, printer color, but we try to limit color if at all possible. But there's, this, I'm not talking about taking this out of SPOLOX, but that's out of.
Maintenance can't come out of SPOLOX.
No, no, that has to come out of general fund. This is just to purchase the machine.
I just wonder.
Yep.
I'm good.
Okay, now, put that on the consent agenda then. Let's move down to the Justice Building on the floor covering over there. That had been really in bad shape for over a year, and really had gotten to the point where it had a bad smell to it, and it was peeling up. So anyway, we bid it out, and I've tried to, we bid it to a local contractor. We had, actually, the Southern Wholesale Carpet, they did come over and give us a bid on it. I called, I ran through a group here, Monda, what's the name of her business, anyway?
Yeah.
The floor, you know, Monda's in the floor.
Discount floor.
Discount floor, and she didn't bid on it. She, for whatever reason, she was real busy, and I asked her a couple of times, and then she finally came and said she wasn't, she didn't, wasn't going to bid on it. And then we had Walker Interiors bid it also. There's, they're a Chattanooga company, but there's a lot of people, several people work there that live in Dade County. I didn't know that, but anyway. And Walker Interior came in for the total job of $12,543, and that's to do all the, they're doing all the halls and the, where the coroner's office is at. Everything, it was tiled, and that was actually in the jail. And like I said, that flooring in there had been in there for, I don't know, I'd probably say 20 years maybe, 20, 25 years, I guess, maybe, and so it was definitely needed. Is there any questions on that?
Okay, go ahead. Does that come out of the sheriff's department's SPOLOX improvement?
Well, not typically, since it's tied to a building, it's.
Yeah, building, right.
It's a side improvement.
Building, yeah.
I mean, it, you know, we own the building, so it's.
What that is. You got any questions on it?
Now, Walker Interior's done a lot of work for me at the hospital, and they do good work. They work a lot with Levins Construction too, so.
They've done some over the years, you know. Robert.
I'd be good with either one of them, and I like to see the lowest, it'd prevail if it's apple to apple.
Oh, it was apple to apple, actually, you know, it's, no, he, actually, Alex walked them through once, and then also Tommy Bradford came over and Joe Chambers, they went through and looked at everything, you know, and it was, it was definitely apples to apple on it, because we want to be sure we got the same that we got in here, you know, that the real durable, waterproof, you know. All right. You okay with it, Phil?
Yes.
All right, put it on the consent agenda. Okay.
The LVT, it's a sheet flooring, isn't it?
Do I know?
This LVT, 20-mil LVT, is that a sheet type flooring, or is that, one of them's planks, and I know what the planks are, but.
It's kind of a rubber laminate, like, which is exactly the floor we got in this, in here, we had to replace ours with year, several years ago.
Yeah, I think it's fiberglass reinforced.
You can pour water on it, whatever, it doesn't, it won't bother, you know. Okay. All right. The, Robin came in and talked to me there just before the meeting. Oh, no, number six, and we need to table that, is that right, Robin?
Right.
Okay, all right. And that's an intergovernmental agreement between the Board of Elections and the City of Trenton, for the city elections. And we'll move down to number seven, that's Resolution R-06-21. Don, I'll turn that over to you and Becca there on the budget amendment.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Rebecca, she typed this up somewhere.
So this was to amend the budget for the CARES funds we received. When we initially received them, they were put back in fiscal year 2020, but we got guidance saying that it actually should be recognized in fiscal year 2021, so you'll see an increase in revenues there for that change. And you'll also see, we increased the expense side of the budget there for the spending of that money. We did not have that in the budget for 2021. We also had, I think, two vehicles that were totaled from the sheriff, and they turned around and used that money to purchase another vehicle, so there's the revenue and the expenses for that vehicle. And then we had some damage down at Parks and Rec due to, what was it, straight line winds, or, that was some, covered by insurance. We received the money in 2020, and we actually expensed it in 2021, so that last other payments increase there is just the spending of that insurance proceeds to fix the park. And that's it.
Lamar, you got any questions on that? Let's go around the table.
I read it, I read it.
Phil?
I read it.
Okay. You, you read it, you aren't with it, or you got questions?
I read it, I just always, Don usually looks at me to make my, but Rebecca's already said it's not money that was in the budget, but somebody inevitably says y'all spent $670,000 more dollars than you budgeted. This is money that came in from the CARES Act, it's money going out, $670,000 in, $670,000 out, but we have to run it through the county. So just so people know that, come budget time, we did not overspend. This $670,000 would be quite an overspending, so, just so everybody listening and watching understands what we're doing. Governmental bookkeeping, Don Constance.
Okay, put that on the consent agenda. Number eight, this is Resolution R-07-21. This is FY 2021 Scrap Tire Abatement Reimbursement, Star Absication. Alan has been hitting us up, but I was notified about 45 minutes before the meeting, he called me, and he has tested positive for COVID. He sounded terrible. He really did. Now, he was here yesterday, a lot of the day in and out, he's with Billy and a lot of people, and he's supposedly has contacted those people, you know, to let them know because he does definitely, he's got it, you know, got the COVID, so. But, Don, I'll go ahead, you've been working with him on this, and you should.
Sure, it's, we were shooting for February, and, but unfortunately, the state said that was too quick, so we were like, okay. So we backed that out to May the 1st, which is the first Saturday in May, and the rain date, or it'd have to be raining pretty hard not to have it, but whatever situation date would be May the 8th. I guess if there's severe weather or something in the area that day, May 1st, it would be pushed at May the 8th, the next weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, so, anyway, first weekend in May is the tire, next tire amnesty, and I really wanted Alan to do.
Is that written in stone now?
No, 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 actually, that has been announced now. We are still waiting to EPD to officially stamp their approval on that. We feel like they will. We got an email there, I got one back from somewhere.
Okay.
That indicated that they were favorable, but they have not yet sent the letter of agreement or whatever it is that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
This is just an application.
All right. Lamar, you got anything you want to add to work session?
No, sir.
All right. Phil? All right. Anyone want to talk to us, then come up and talk to us. We kind of started this, you know, I mean, you can talk to us about anything on the agenda, or if you want to just come up, you know, if that's something you want to talk about, that's fine. Okay.
Did we miss number nine, 10? Or did we not talk about it?
No, no, no accident, that's on the Republic Service.
Just for notice.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
John Huffman, most know me as Your Date Helper for the last three years. I'm watching, actually, speaking of that, I'm actually watching the light while I got the mic. I just got a big donation of canned food, and I'm going to restock the blessings box at the library. I'm giving the rest to Debbie Mann, Warren, so if you need canned food, just because you need food, check the boxes, you know, right after I stock them here, so, anyway. Go ahead and get started, just real fast. All right. Commissioners, thank you. A long time to see, it seems like, May 2019 was the last time I've been here, so about two years. Okay. Prior to these monthly commission meetings, counties across Georgia post a meeting agenda, just like you have up there on your screens. Walker County, on one hand, provides the agenda itself, as well as all the documents that go with them, including resolutions, so that their citizens get the complete information and can review and discuss and be ready with questions before the meetings. Dade, on the other hand, gets one piece of paper. Here is the packet for Wal, for Walker for their last regular meeting. Here's what we get in Dade. Why can Walker County do it for their citizens, but Dade government is not making it happen for ours? I ask, and Carrie said, that if citizens want resolutions included and the complete packet communicated like Walker gets, you all have to vote on that. It can't just be done as a Dade government practice, it requires a vote, and everyone agreed to it. So I'm making a request for a motion that Dade citizens are just as important as Walker County's, and if Walker County can make it happen for their people, the whole enchilada packet, instead of just tasty morsel, then we should make that happen. And all these are public documents anyway, so posting them online and electronically will stop citizens from having to spend their own money via an information request for this information. So my request for the motion is for, starting now, for county government, at every meeting, preferably posted a week in advance, like Walker does. Walker already had this up a week ago, all the resolutions, everything online, so if anybody, anybody wants to look at it, make, just go through and scroll. And then again, like Walker does, all documents and not just the meeting minutes will all be scanned and posted electronically online in the after-meeting packet, so if anybody historically wants to look at those, they can. We want a packet too, and more than one piece of paper. And as someone who has personally scanned, worked in a tech library, and scanned hundreds of documents daily, scanning Dade government's small packet twice a month is an easy process that only takes a few minutes and improves communication and allows for better citizen participation. That's all I got, thank you. I'm asking for a yes, thumbs up vote for Dade to make this happen. Any questions I can help you with about what I'm requesting?
How many people's contacted you about this? I've not heard anything but you, you know, you're the only one that I've heard that.
I'm asking, I'm asking for myself.
Yeah, okay.
There's no we here, there's me.
Okay, good, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Robert, you want to, you got any questions for John?
I do have, well, not necessarily a question, this is not the first time this has come up, and.
Oh.
We may, we may not do what Walker County does, we may not do what Whitfield.
You're saying other people have asked for that?
No, no, it's not the first time that people have wanted it, oh, Mr. Huffman. The problem is, if I give something to our attorney, or I give it to Don, and we put that out, and there's a change in it, and you don't get that change, historically, people have come to this meeting, y'all changed it. This ain't what I have. We've got to know.
Well, Walker.
We've got to know, I can't have what Walker.
I'm not saying wouldn't Walker have, have that same problem when.
They may have.
They're new, they're new, brand new, that's five-man commission.
No, no, they've had their stuff posted since 2016. This isn't, they've had, they have a new government going, one going to five, but this posting of documentation has been a practice since 2016.
But we're not Walker County, we don't do things, we're not, you know.
But my, my point is more best practices from other counties. There's no reason why we can't adopt them here, and that.
Well, do you have any documentation where people have come and talked to Mr. Whitfield, and then before, or after last month, the five-man commission pattern after hours, and said, we don't have, you don't have that from him, that people have not come and said, but that's not what you sent out.
Right.
You changed it.
And I'm sure that.
We changed something by, we changed something by two acres one time and took a beating for it.
Well, anytime anything gets sent out in advance of the actual event, it's always subject to change. That's just the state of the world. I mean, you got an accident, you have a meeting, and next thing you know, the meeting's not going to happen, and you have to change that, but you posted it a week ago, and everybody expects it to happen and is angry about it. It's just the state of the, you know, there's going to be situations that come up.
Phil, let's go around the table, just get a opinion. Lamar, you got any comment on it, or if you know?
I tend to agree with Mr. Huffman. When we get these documents, they're actually public record, are they not? So, when I get mine on my telephone, and Rebecca sends them to me, I don't see why they can't be posted to the website, and there will be changes. We know there was changes sometimes right up to the end of the meeting, you know. They will, that's exactly right. And I just want people, I'm saying it for that camera, not just for Mr. Huffman, that there are going to change, so what Carrie has put on, if we go this route, what she's put on the website, may change, it may be, it may be tabled before we come in here, maybe something's happened. And. As long as they don't come back then, want to beat us to death over that, because it, you're going to get beat so many times because things, just like the agenda, we can come in and amend the agenda before the meeting. Is that not right, Mr. Rock? But it wouldn't be on the agenda that was sent out. So somebody would say, well, we didn't get anything on that, and Mr. Huffman, I'm only saying it because we've gone through it. We've gone through that beating, and there's just no sense in us being, when we do it, and we try to do the best we can, if that becomes good enough, then so be it.
Well, a good example are the resolutions that are, there's two resolutions, right? Aren't y'all gonna vote on those resolutions right after this workshop?
We'll vote on the consent agenda. We.
We're gonna vote them into effect, but the public has, this is the first time they're seeing it, and if they're not watching this meeting, then they have never seen it before. They've never actually seen the words. Well, to be honest with you, I don't even know if the words were ever put up there, they could have been, but, so, but you're gonna, so you're gonna vote on something the public has never even seen? I mean, I was, I'm just asking, like, can you just give us a day or two to, like, look at it maybe or, or the best, you know, your best effort in a day or two or whatever you can do? Here's an idea, I want to say, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time, I'm just.
Well, it's not really something though, Robin, that we would need him to vote on. I mean, is it? I mean, that's something, it's public record and it's not that hard to post them, you know, I mean, for her, you know, because we've got this thing going, I mean, she's really doing a good job keeping everything up to date, so it's not a big deal, one way or the other, you know, we can, but, but there again, you know, I know what Robert's saying because we've been here before and then we'd be, get called down because, you know, and quote said, well, that was not on there, that's not what you're supposed to be voting on, that wording was not in there. You know, and that's, and I say we, because we've got that several times when we put stuff out.
It's been done a lot of times.
And it's best to have the real deal out there, you know.
I don't, I don't have, honestly, I don't have a problem with them getting it when, same time we get ours. But know that it can change and you may not get the change in time. And that's the best we can promise.
Appreciate your time in the discussion, I really do.
All right, thank you, thanks for coming. And John, I'm gonna tell you, you're all welcome here. You've never been blackballed, I promise you from, I mean, I know you felt that when you told people, but you're always welcome to this meeting and in our office, so don't, don't go there, I mean, it's not, it's not, you know. We appreciate you coming and that.
Thanks, Dad.
Okay, see you, John. And I mean, to finish this conversation, there's nothing to put in, you know, to post in these things, I mean, if we want, but, but there again, people need to understand, you know, even the wording of a resolution could change. It could change three hours before this meeting and we come in and most people understand it, but we've got people out there, y'all know too, that don't understand it and they just raise cane, you know, when you come in here, you know, and do that, so, you know, if y'all fine with it, I don't mind.
I mean, I can remember times when we were waiting on the state to tell us what they wanted.
Yeah.
For the meeting and it had to change, right?
Yeah.
Just a few hours.
Just a few hours before the meeting, you know, and it's important, really, and critical.
Well, sometimes before our, before our meeting or depending on what day it falls on, we don't know what SPOLOST is till sometimes the day or day before. And a lot of financial, because we have the first Thursday.
That's right, like on even.
And you don't always have it. I don't have a problem with when it's sent out to us, them getting what we get. But we may change it and I, it just gets old being beat to death because somebody then stand up and say, well, this ain't what I got the other day off, online. And no, it's not because we made a change. Again, it may be some acreage we changed in something, if it's a, not, if it's a, something we're dealing with, with land or whatever. And as long as they know that, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
But we have been beat to death over it because that's not what I saw. Well, they're gonna, we, we've got to see the finished product and we usually get it as soon as our clerk and assistant clerk can get it to us, we get the finished project. But even when they send it out, sometimes it says Attorney Rogers is working for something for this section or the financial's not included. And that's what they're gonna get, so that's fine and I don't have a problem with doing it. But don't turn around and beat us to death on the other side of it because something changed during that time. And this, this again is for the, excuse me, the public, not just, not just Mr. Huffman, but for the public, just like what we talked about in the budget amendment. I don't know how many times we've heard, well, y'all spent more money than the budget. It's because we just did what we did. There's only one thing you can do, hide it in a shoebox somewhere or you put it through the bank like it's supposed to be done right, but it does look like y'all spent $670,000 more than you budgeted to spend. We didn't. It was money in, money out, grant money or whatever that might be, insurance money from wrecked cars or whatever. So that's all I'm saying is that the public needs to learn that we do the best we can do, it's not hiding anything from them, but you get, on the other hand, and you get beat to death over it, because that ain't what you showed me online. So I'm fine with putting it online when Don or whoever sends it out or Carrie put it, whatever we get, when we get it online.
May I say something? We, in the past, and I'm looking back at fifteen years of commissioners, okay? Many times, the four commissioners, they're working commissioners typically, I mean, they work full-time jobs, not always, but sometimes they're retired and, but when they do work, they don't always, they're not always able to open that email or that packet immediately. And if they stop on the way home to the grocery store or whatever and someone absolutely attacks them in the, in the aisle over Resolution R- whatever, and they're gonna be like, what are you talking about? That's primarily, that's the, that's my primary reason for not withholding, but just allowing the commissioners to review the packet before it's made public. I mean, that's, that was been the whole purpose. There's nothing secret about it, yes, it's public record, anybody could ask for it at any time. We have mounds and mounds of papers that we could copy, but the bottom line is, it's just giving the commissioners who were elected by the people the opportunity to look at this first so that you're not completely caught off guard and, but, if that's fine, I mean, we don't mind doing it, it's simply adding it an extra email address to y'all, you know, to Carrie and she can add that to the, to the agenda, to the website. I think there, we'll have to check, see how we add it to the website. We don't want to create, you know, more expense, but surely there'll be a way we can attach the documents without it being, without it taking up a lot of room. Some of these documents though, as you well know, sometimes these sections are 150 pages, that's nothing I can do about that. We always want to give the commissioners all the information that's made available to review, you know, so I mean, sometimes these sections are big and it will take up a lot of room on the internet, I mean, on the website, so we'll be happy to comply with that, but if you, after you've had a chance to think about it.
Lamar, go around, you got anything you want to bring up before we adjourn the work session?
Only reason I said that is I just, I'm trying to do my best to, to give the public all the information that they can get and to interact, I mean, even my family has been attacked at the, or been questioned at the post office and, and at the grocery store, but that's one reason I thank my wife when I asked to run for a commissioner, because I know it.
You're in it.
She has, yeah, she's, there's gonna be a little bit, and she'll tell them right quick. I'm not a commissioner, I don't get involved in politics, if you, I'll give you Lamar's number. And I'm used to, you know.
Phil, if you got anything that you, not just on this, but I'm just saying, if y'all got anything that you want to bring up, you know, before we adjourn the work session, you can freely, it's easier to talk in a work session than in a meeting, you know, about anything, but. Robert?
No, none of them.
And I did mention to you, I know I said this probably twice, but Alan Bradford does have COVID, so I'll keep him in his, in your prayers, because, you know, as y'all know from the people that we've seen that's had it, I've had it, you don't know how hard it's gonna be on you, so do, do keep him, because he did, he sounded really bad a while ago, you know. And then he called, and then he said, well, I don't think I ought to come to the meeting, I said, no.
Unless you say it by Lamar.
Stay home. Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll adjourn the, the work session. Let's take just a few minutes break here and then we'll come back and, and we'll go into our regular meeting, okay?